City staff, members of the public. Again, my name is Alex DiGiorgio. I'm the Senior Manager of Public Engagement for Ava Community Energy. And I'm thrilled to be here with you this evening. Sometimes these presentations create more questions than they answer. So if that's the case tonight, I'll try to expedite the presentation as quickly as I can. And we'll get to Q and A because I know that there's some burning questions out there. So what is Ava Community Energy? We are a local government agency. We're a Joint Powers Authority. And our mission is to provide cleaner electricity at lower rates. It's a straightforward statement, but a complex process. So as a not-for-profit public agency, we reinvest revenues, i.e. your ratepayer dollars, into the community through lower rates, electrification programs, renewable power projects, and support for community-based organizations. And I'll detail some of that here in this presentation. Just a quick overview. Ava Community Energy began in Alameda County. So we've been serving communities in Alameda County since 2018. We serve all of the cities, except for the city of Alameda, that island right there. They have their own municipal utility districts, so they weren't eligible for our service. But we serve all of the other incorporated jurisdictions, as well as the county itself. The city of Tracy was the first jurisdiction outside of Alameda County to join our agency. They began service in 2020. And now the cities of both Lathrop and Stockton are, at this moment, embarking on the launch of service. I'll also note that San Joaquin County, the Board of Supervisors, voted unanimously to join our agency as well. So they are now a member of our Joint Powers Authority. And service will begin to the unincorporated areas in 2026. So this map is going to get a lot darker green to the east. I won't belabor this, but just the quick history here. I want to point out that in 2022, when Lathrop and with Stockton both joining, our Board of Directors decided that we're no longer East Bay Community Energy. Originally, we had launched as East Bay Community Energy when we were just in Alameda County. But now that we're serving such a large portion outside of Alameda County, they decided to rebrand as Ava Community Energy. And Ava is not an acronym. It's just a nod to both Alameda County and the Valley. What are the benefits of this? So there are more benefits than I can mention here this evening. But the ones that are most top of mind would be certainly the lower rates that we provide. And I'll detail that in a moment. But also local control. Our Board of Directors is composed of a democratically elected official from every jurisdiction that we serve. The mayor serves on our Board of Directors. Our Board of Directors is responsible for approving our rates, programs, and policies. We are regulated by the CPUC, but we're independent when it comes to setting our rates. There's, of course, the sustainability aspect. We're trying to rapidly reduce energy-related greenhouse gas emissions. And then there's just the basic fundamental value of customer choice. I was born and raised here in California, always been a PG&E customer. It wasn't until a community choice agency like Ava came along that actually I had a choice and an option of where my energy came from. Very quickly, Ava is only responsible for the generation of the power. So the resources that generate the power, wind, solar, hydroelectricity, that's what we're responsible for. PG&E is still responsible for delivering the energy. And they're still responsible for all the billing services. So all of our customers are still PG&E customers for everything except for the source of the energy. And if folks don't want to purchase energy from Ava for whatever reason, you can simply opt out and you'll be purchasing it again from PG&E and their energy supply at their rates, which are a little bit higher than ours. I know this is a familiar sight, but maybe not such a welcome one, the power bill. I want to detail here exactly what it looks like for customers. So historically, PG&E has provided both services of generating the electricity and delivering the electricity. With a community choice agency like Ava, those two services are split. And so for our customers, they will see a separate line item on the bill for Ava's electric generation charges. I want to emphasize that those are not additional charges. Those are replacement charges for what PG&E would have otherwise charged for those services. And our rates again are 5% lower than PG&E's. And I can get into more questions about billing when the time comes. But for the sake of time, I'm going to move along here. We currently offer two options. The Bright Choice option, which is our standard option for most communities. And that's the option that's at a discounted rate. It's currently at 55% renewable. It's actually closer to about 85% carbon-free when you add in large hydroelectric resources. In the state of California, those don't count as renewable, but they are emissions-free. And then we also offer, for those who want it, a 100% renewable option. It's a blend of wind and solar. It's priced at a quarter of a cent more per kilowatt hour, which for the average resident in our service area, it comes to about $3 to $5 more per month. It can fluctuate with usage, so we definitely caution people that if you do have times when you use a lot of energy, that quarter percent per kilowatt hour can add up. But nevertheless, almost half of our member jurisdictions have actually defaulted to that 100% renewable option. In Stockton, we're going to start out with the discounted option as the default option. But those who want it can choose the Renewable 100 option as well. And I probably should have said earlier, and I can emphasize this later as well, that the default option, that is by state law, community choice energy agencies like ours, by state law, we have to become the default provider of service. And people can certainly opt out if they choose to, and they do.
And there's no fee?
No, there's no fee. I'm not going to belabor this too much, but one of the reasons why we exist is to catalyze sustainable development, both within our communities and throughout the state of California. And we're doing that at a pretty fast clip. We've got upwards, almost two dozen contracts, over 1,200 megawatts of renewable energy. These are projects that are real steel in the ground, union labor, and they're actually catalyzing sustainable development throughout California. The battery storage is really important, too, because that allows you to capture the wind and the sun and then dispatch, become the default provider of service. But for those who want to opt out, they can. We also want to make sure people know they have these options. So by law, we have to send four enrollment notices. The first one went out in February. The second one is going out this month. And then the next two will go out sequentially in the ensuing months. We also have a robust community outreach campaign that we're launching right now. I can detail that in a moment. But make sure to check your mail. And we also send notices by email as well, if we have your email on file. And we'll be sending customized notices to customers that have solar because their situation is a little more unique. And also, the notices are co-branded with the city. So you'll see that and you'll know it's not junk mail. Just to pause, because I know that there are a lot of customers with solar in the cities of Stockton and Lathrop. For those with solar, you will be transitioned in accordance with your true-up date. For those who don't know what a true-up is, that's when the utility kind of equalizes your usage. They balance it out between how much you've used and how much you've generated. And so they either issue a credit or they send you a bill. So that process is going to occur on your true-up date. And for customers who have solar and they have specific questions about their bill, we welcome their calls so that we can address those questions. One other detail, though, for solar customers. If you are with Ava and you have $100 or more of surplus generation credit, we will actually send you a check in the mail if you so choose. And people do get checks. We send out tens of thousands of dollars a year in checks to customers who are surplus generators. So again, just the timeline, right now, we're right in the middle. The second enrollment notice has gone out. The actual enrollment will occur on your April billing cycle. So the date at which you would get billed by PG&E, that's the date at which you'd cut over and transition to Ava service. For folks who don't want Ava service at all, we encourage you to opt out by mid-March so that you aren't enrolled in April. Oh, and of course, the first charges you'll see from Ava will be on your May bill. Again, the notices, we try to have a variety of different notices. Some are in a sealed envelope. Of course, in Stockton, it'll have Stockton's seal there, not Lathrop's. But we also send notices that are a little bit more kind of branded, trifold brochure. There you go, the mayor's got it. We're trying to cover all bases to make sure people actually get these notices so that they can make an informed decision on what they'd like to do. Opting out. Now, we obviously, we want to encourage folks to stick with Ava. We offer lower rates, cleaner electricity, local control. But at the same time, we also want to respect people's wishes. And if they want to opt out, we want to facilitate that. You can do so online or by phone. And I just checked the data before I came here. As of last week, there have been about 1,400 opt-outs and several opt-ups. 1,400 might sound like a lot. It's about 1.2% of the customers here in the city. So it's not that high, but I'm emphasizing that because that's evidence that people are getting the message and people are taking action. So we look at opt-outs as a measure that people are being reached with our messaging. Oh, yes, and as the mayor said, there is no $5 fee. That there was a glitch on our display at one point, but there is not a $5 fee to opt out. So there are a few common misconceptions. We just want to clarify that if you are on any discount programs, like low-income discount programs, CARE, FARA, or medical baseline, none of those change with Ava's service. You don't need to re-enroll. You don't need to do anything. All of that is seamless. There's an official who's on our board from every jurisdiction that we serve, as I mentioned before. And that's because we are a local government agency. And this is now a democratic endeavor to provide the energy services, the electricity services, that is. We don't provide gas services. That's still going to be PG&E. Oh, and the only compensation that our board members receive is $128 per meeting that they attend. We have monthly board meetings. And I know that for some who are traveling very far, our board meetings are held in Oakland. So for those who are traveling very far, that might cover the cost. We get this question a lot, how can you be cheaper? And really, it fundamentally comes down to the fact that we are a public agency. And so that gives us three sustained competitive advantages. The first is that we do not have to pay shareholder dividends. So we don't have to take your ratepayer dollars and turn those into shareholder profits. Instead, we can reinvest those in lower rates. We also have a lower tax burden because we're a government agency. And as a municipal agency, we have access to cheaper capital through municipal bonds. Also, just to be very straightforward, we are a small nimble organization, a fraction of the size of PG&E. To put it candidly, PG&E probably has more lawyers and lobbyists than we do employees. And there's probably a cost savings there, too. We do not have door-to-door salespeople. If anyone comes knocking on your door saying that they're with Ava Energy, close the door. It's not us. We don't do that. And if your power goes out, you're still going to call PG&E because PG&E is still maintaining the lines and wires. So you're still going to be calling PG&E if your power goes out or if you have questions about the actual service of the delivery of the energy. Customer outreach, we are at events. We're holding webinars. We're attending public meetings. If you have a community group that you think would benefit from having one of our representatives come and present to them, we'd be more than happy to do so. We have employees that live here in the city of Stockton as well. So we would be more than happy to get in front of as many audiences as possible. We want people to know about this so that they can make a choice of where their energy comes from. I can also go into some of the other advertising and provide examples of that for those who are interested. We're on social media, just like all the hip folks are these days. And so Instagram, Facebook, Nextdoor, we're on there. We're trying to get the word out in every way, shape, or form. Lastly, just some key resources. We have a Stockton-specific landing page on our website. Because we're a public agency, we are subject to the Brown Act. All our meetings are open to the public. You are more than welcome. In fact, are encouraged to attend, make public comment, have your voice be heard. All of our key documents are available online. Our budgeting process, it's all done in a transparent process. And with that, I'd be more than happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Very informative. Vice Mayor.
First of all, thank you. I really appreciate how thorough the presentation was. I've been trying to just wrap my mind around this whole Ava rollout thing. Because when I first heard about it and I was asked to speak at the press conference, I did as much research as I could. I had a meeting with your team. I thought I was well-informed. I saw the benefits. I know most people think that PG&E is a terrorist organization. I don't understand the way they charge. It's criminal, to say the least, in my opinion. And then here comes along Ava. And at the press conference, I said, wow, this is like Robin Hood, you know? Taken from the rich, given to the barely surviving. And then afterwards, I went online and it was just like Christina's getting $190,000 a year. It just became all this gossip and just rumor mill that just kind of eclipsed the opportunity, right? So the first question I have is, well, let me first back up. I think you should absolutely partner with each one of us at some point to do a presentation to our districts. I think even if it's an online community forum, which I'm good about getting online, I think a Zoom presentation, answer questions. Because it seems like the presentation was also coupled with people's anger towards PG&E, people's lack of trust in government or lack of trust in new opportunity. And I just think that there would be such a benefit to the community to be able to have an online or some type of forum with your organization to answer questions. So that's number one, just a recommendation. I want to do it, so what my colleagues do is up to them. The second thing is this fact sheet or FAQ in here. I mean, it would be great if we had social media assets that had that information. So when you see all the comments online, we can be sharing social media posts if you have it. I think giving it to council members to be able to share on social media would be a good thing. And then the third thing is, I think if there was some type of visual, like an audiovisual explanation of different things, sort of like the way Kaiser did the Thrive campaign, where they just kind of explained in a very clear way what the benefits were, I think would go a long way because people share a lot of information on social media. And before people even tried to do the research, it was like, opt out, opt out, opt out. I'm like, anyway, I kind of gave up. But this gives me hope that there's good information that we can get out to people and I'll help in any way I can.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lee. I appreciate the comparison to Kaiser, too, because we consider ourselves the public option for energy administered at the local level. And thank you for the suggestions. We'll follow up on that.
Councilmember Flavio.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you for this presentation. I do think it's just very, very important that the community become more educated about Ava. I think that there are misperceptions out there. And this is really a good thing. So I look at the 1,400 people that, you know, have already chosen to opt out. And you said it's a small number, but it's like, why wouldn't you want to get a 5% discount? I mean, 5%, it's not a huge amount, but gosh, every bit helps. And knowing that you're using it from a cleaner energy source. So I think getting that word out and doing education is just a huge component of this. And I think those 1,400 people, they have 60 days to change their mind, right?
Oh, yes, thank you. They do. In fact, they have more than, if they've already opted out, then they can request a return at any time. It's if they opt out after 60 days of service. By PG&E's standards and conditions, terms and conditions, they'll be required to stay with PG&E for a year before they can return to our service. So for now, if they've opted out, they are welcome to return at any time.
And I do like the Vice Mayor's idea. I think getting into the different districts and holding educational events makes huge sense. So I would like to participate in that as well.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Enriquez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I echo, I thank you again for the presentation. I echo what my colleagues have shared so far. To the point of, just for clarification, I know just so folks that are listening, folks that are here, it's great that on your website, you mentioned 144 million saved since 2018 by customers to those who would have rather paid PG&E. You don't do door-knocking. And people, their taxes aren't being used to utilize this service. One of the things in terms of the whole opt-out that I know I saw online was, well, why am I being forced? And for the record, this is a state law, right? This is state law AB 117 that, on the Stockton website, so please go to the Stockton website for those listening, type in Ava Community Energy, has a great rundown of all the information. And with the meeting where City Council on September 13, 2022, voted on, that has a resolution, has the recorded meetings. So those that want to see that, you know, this has been going on since 2022. But even before that, we also want to give thanks to huge environmental green advocates, you know, Mayor Fugazi, former council member Dan Wright, those that know Davis Harper and others that were really committed, and city staff that were really trying to bring a way to help minimize costs for the people of Stockton. So I want to just put that out there in terms of, I know the automatic enrollment was a question of concern. And I know you covered it, but I want to specifically mention that, to the Vice Mayor's point about community outreach, I see here that you've already had two webinars. One was actually today at 4:30. I just found out about it, and I'm not blaming anybody. But I mean, if this is on our city website, that we had one yesterday at 12:30 and one today at 4:30, my question would be, if they're recorded, we'd love to share it. And doing the additional work of us being in our districts to bring people in to further educate about Ava and the partnership. So that'd be helpful. I just noticed that on our website. And then one last thing, too, is in terms of our website, I was looking at the main Ava website. And I've had some constituents of mine ask me if there's any way that we can get, I don't know if customer reviews, thoughts, just folks that have been utilizing Ava, especially in the East Bay towns for the last five, six-ish years. If there's a way where we can just have that, just provide any folks that want to feel more at ease to say, wow, I've been with Ava for X amount, this has been great. And would that be possible? And then I have another question.
Sure, like testimonials from our current customers?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure we could figure out some way of doing. We have to respect customer confidentiality.
Of course.
But I'm thinking maybe, especially if we could find some commercial or industrial customers, that would go a long way because that 5% really adds up for those large businesses.
Yeah, exactly. And for those, you know, every little bit counts, as my colleagues have shared. If it's, if you're saving $5, $10 a month, and think about that, that's $60, $80 in a year, that's someone's grocery run that you can make. And that could be life-saving for families that we're not really thinking about. So every dollar really adds up when we're making that grocery run or we have to pay something, diapers, et cetera. And then maybe this is to the staff. For the Ava Community Energy page on our city website, if we can provide just updated, if we are able to do more webinars, provide that updated information. And then also for the opt-in, for those that opted out that want to later opt in, I don't want to make, I want to make sure it's not confusing for folks. So to say, oh, do I go to the Ava website? Do I go to the city website? How do I get educated? If there's a way, if this is the streamline for our people to be on the city website, let's make sure that there's a section that says, opt it out. This is how you opt back in. I think that'd be helpful for folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Vila Pudua.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And great presentation. Just a few questions. I agree with my colleagues, you know, if we can have these outreaches in every district, it would be great, right? As well as we can have, you know, we're sending mail. We could have it in multiple languages, even though we're going these outreaches.
Como no.
We need that as well because a lot of it is 40%. There's Latinos. Other question, you said that Ava's 5% lower than any of them. Now, is that going to be, I mean, for how long? Is that going to be for a year, two years, and go back? I mean, that is one of the questions, if you can answer that.
Sure, yeah, so that's up to our board. Our board has a budgeting cycle every year. It occurs in May to June. And that's when they review our value proposition, which is the discount for Bright Choice and the premium for Renewable 100. So historically, Ava has always offered a lower rate. It started out as 1.5% and then it grew to 3%, and now it's at 5%. So the trend has been upward. But in full transparency, this is something that gets reviewed annually. And so it's possible it could be higher in the future. It's possible it could be reduced. That will just depend on our board's discretion and, you know, the constraints of the day. But the goal is to keep it growing.
Absolutely. My second question is, you said you've been going to city cities. You went to the county supervisors, they approved. Has there been any other cities that did not approve? And what was the reason why they did not?
Ah, no, that's a great question. No, you know, initially, when we first launched in Alameda County, the cities of Newark and Pleasanton decided to hold off and see how things would go. And what they saw was that all of their neighbors were enjoying lower rates for more renewable energy. And so in 2019, along with the city of Tracy, they voted to join. So no, to date, there has not been a city, with those two exceptions, that has ever decided not to join our agency. Those that decided to hold off very quickly decided to join because they saw the benefit.
Okay, so last question. The mailing, now is that going to be, we're going to get two separate mails, mailing from Ava and PG&E? Or is that going to be all once? And how's that going to work?
Yeah, so it will be monthly from Ava, not from PG&E. This is just going to be coming from Ava. And it'll come in different forms, in a sealed envelope and then in a trifold brochure. If we have your email on file, we'll email you. But it's going to be coming on a monthly basis between now and May.
Okay, no further questions. Take your mare.
Okay, so clarification on that. Were you talking about the letter or you're talking about, our bill is still going to come from PG&E?
The bill is still going to come from PG&E, excuse me. The bill. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. The bill is still going to be issued by PG&E. The only thing that will change with the bill is the line item that says Ava's generation charges. But we're talking about the notices to inform people that this change is occurring. That's going to be coming from Ava. But the bill is still coming from PG&E.
Yes, and I was going to add that, thank you so much. It's in English and Spanish. So for those of our residents that, you know, want it in Spanish, it does come in Spanish on the same paper. I do have a couple of things I'd like to point out. The meetings are every month on Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month, at 6:00 PM. And they are hosted at the County Administrative Building because Supervisor Rickman is also on the Ava board along with me. So he's agreed to host it over there. I said, well, we can do it here in City Hall. And he said, ah, will you come over here? So maybe I can get him back here when we open the new digs. But it's open to the public. So anybody and everybody can come to that meeting that would like to be a part of it. Also, I wanted to say that, you know, how many people step over a quarter and don't pick it up? Like, I pick up pennies, but a quarter. People pick up quarters, dollars. Listen, I found a $100 bill once walking on Edison's campus. And I held onto it for a year until someone stole it from me. But I literally had it for a year, waiting for somebody to say they lost it, and then somebody stole it from me. But anyway, people would pick up the money. I mean, I can't understand why people are upset about that. And as Mr. Richardson pointed out, you know, global warming is here. We have opportunities for renewable energy. We need to take advantage of those. But the thing that really sold me on this was Alameda County Supervisor Scott Haggerty. And I sat on the ACE board together, Regional Rail. And he said, in all of his years, and they don't have term limits, in all of his years as a supervisor, this was the one thing he was most proud about for bringing to the people in his district, in his county. He said, bar none, this was it. And I just, it was a big testament to me to have somebody that had that many years in public office say, the one thing was this. Not rail, even though we're very proud of rail. But he said, this really was something that was good for the community because those dollars came back into our community. Any of those, right, it came back into our community and we get to determine where that money goes. So I am very excited about it. I know that the people, you know, change is hard. And people don't know what they like because they only like what they know. And what they know is PG&E, you know, Sacramento has SMD. I had some people say, hey, can we join the SMD? Gosh, down in Southern California, we don't want to talk about what happened with Edison. But, you know, I mean, there's just stuff out there. People will scream murder about, you know, PG&E. And here we have an option, and it's like, no, I want PG&E. So anyway, if you, if people out there, if you want to go back to PG&E, you can. There's nothing wrong with that. Just call the number, go on the website, you can be, stay with PG&E. Go for it. Nobody is stopping you from doing that, okay? So I'm happy to provide all the information, report out on this, of our monthly meetings, keep people abreast of opportunities to participate and to weigh in. So thank you so much, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I mean, I'm going to always support cost-saving opportunities for constituents because, I mean, you know, we are a community that, you know, is trying to figure it out and how to do better. I want to be clear, you know, I'm not endorsing whether you do it or don't do it. It's the public's choice. You all do what is in your best interest. I do think, though, again, to continue to get information out there, I agree with Councilman Vila Pudua in terms of translation of documents because we do have an Asian-American community as well and a Sikh-Punjabi community. So I just would want to really be very aware of that. The second thing is on Slide 18, you all talk about sponsoring events and stuff. I mean, Black Family Day, Cinco de Mayo, the Sikh Parade, Fourth of July. Like, there's key activations happening throughout the city. Like, there's key, uh, activations happening throughout the city. What's the event in your district where people are driving?
Oh, cruise nights.
Cruise nights. I think that, you know, it would really benefit you to tap in with the community groups, uh, or the council people who have activations happening on those dates because, uh, you're going to get lots of community engagement, lots of people out, and it'd be a great opportunity uh, to both invest in the community that you're wanting to, uh, lead in from an energy standpoint, but also to be, uh, available for people to come up and engage you in public.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lee. And, and that reminds me that we are actually taking applications for our community grants such as these right now. Um, the application is open till the end of this month, and so March 31st. So we'll, we'll definitely be looking to-
Okay, people right now are clamoring to figure out where to apply? How do they apply?
Uh, go to our website.
Okay.
Please.